You know, it's like, okay. Push.
Okey dokey.
Good evening, Rolling Meadows. This is the June 19th, 2018 Committee of the Whole meeting. First thing on the agenda is the fiscal year 2017 audit. And Ms. Gallagher, I guess this is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we are discussing the city's audit, and that's the 2017 audit for year-end fiscal, 2017 year-end December 31st. We're going to go through a few things before I turn it over to Jamie Wilkie of Lauderbach and Eamon. She's a partner at our audit firm. And I'm just going to take a few minutes to kind of walk you through a couple of items. The audit is a year-long product of the financial results as of December 31st, 2017 for all of the city's funds, investments, and pension accounting. Usually you see Ron Eamon of Lauderbach and Eamon, but tonight Jamie, who's been a partner for many, many years, is going to be giving a presentation and walk through the audit. On the city council laptops, there is a copy of the audit. It is marked draft. It's going to stay in draft form until we validate and finalize the final review of the audit with the city auditors. For full transparency of the city's finances, the city releases a draft audit to the city council, which we're doing this evening, and we're going to walk you through the major parts to the audit. The staff and city auditors over the course of the next week will finish the review and then publish it by June 29th, which is next Friday, a week from this Friday. I encourage you to review certain items in the audit. In tonight's draft, we don't have that in there, but it will be in the final, which is our management's discussion and analysis and the transmittal letter. And those two items coupled with the summary that is in the agenda packet tonight will give you an overview of the financial results as of December 31st, 2017. When the audit is ready, we do upload it to the city's website under the transparency portal, and a paper copy is available to the city council upon request. There are many agencies that we do file with for the audit, many different ways. We were just discussing that. One of the agencies that we file with is the government, it's an agency, but an outside nonprofit firm called, or nonprofit, is the Government Finance Officers Association. And that is the association that we submit our CAFR to for the award program, and Jamie will go through that. We also do file with the credit rating agencies, the Security and Exchange Commission, Cook County State Agencies, and many other agencies as well. We also file with Dun &amp; Bradstreet. The audit goes to many agencies. The city does produce a citizens' report, which is a condensed report, which is called the Popular Annual Financial Report, which we also load to the city's website as well by June 29th. It is a condensed report. It's about 10 pages long. It summarizes all of the financial results as of December 31st, and we've heard from many residents that it's been very helpful to review. Jamie will discuss the audit opinion letter that the city does receive with the audit for this year. The city did achieve the highest audit opinion letter, and she'll go into that. And I did want to review with you the agenda packet, which does contain several items of interest. Within your packet, and that's on the agenda packet for the city council meeting, we have an audited fund balance summary, which does go into all of the funds and how they ended for the year. We footnote it at the bottom, which all does tie to the audit. This is draft form, so if there's something here, we will correct it going forward, but at this point, this is what is final. On the second page, we have a general fund balance review, which is the audited data for the general fund. General fund unassigned balance is $7.7 million for the year end, which is about 25% of operating expenditures for the year, which is about three months' worth of reserves. That is the second page of the audit review packet for you, and Jamie's going to go into that as well. We have a fund balance policy review, which really does break down the three funds that we have fund balances policies for, which is the general fund, which achieved a 25% fund balance, which is in range for the fund balance policy. We have the refuse fund, which is in range, which is a 30% to 50% fund balance range, which came in at 40% for the year. And then we have the 911 fund, which has a range of one to one and a half times of expenditures for the year. With a caveat, here it is in range, but at the same point, we are planning for some reserves to be used for capital expenditures, particularly radios for Northwest Central Dispatch for police, fire, and the city. And that's why it's a little bit higher than the range, and that's in your packet. Within your packet, too, is the financial results for IMRF, police and fire pension. I do want to mention that. Jamie's going to go into a lot more detail, but this does show you the net assets or net position for the funds, as well as the funded status, and there's some good results and good stories to tell there. There's a little bit of a change here on IMRF. She'll go into that as well. Just a little typo there. And then on the last page, I'm just going to summarize that the debt service outstanding as of December 31st, 2018, there's a chart there for your reference as well, which shows you all the way to 2023. At the end of the audit presentation, of course, we are happy to answer any questions, and I'm going to turn it over to Jamie Wilkie, partner with Lauderbach and Eamon. Jamie?
Thank you, Melissa. You've got a little bit of height on me, so. Good evening. First of all, I would like to thank Melissa and her team. I know she said this is a year-long process. It is certainly that. We get involved at about the six-month window, so we have been working with city staff since about December, starting with planning meetings and going into field work testing, and then our draft phases of the audit. That exercise certainly does not happen without the absolute coordinated effort of the staff here. It is a very clean audit process when we come in, full cooperation with the staff as far as obtaining the documents that we need. So I wanted to thank Melissa and her team for all of their efforts. Melissa did mention the Certificate of Achievement Award. As you look in the PDF of the CAFR document itself, it is one of the first items provided. So I believe the CAFR is in full form there, and as I go through and review the sections, you should be able to scroll through the document alongside me. So the Certificate of Achievement is, in fact, a third-party independent review of the annual audit. There is about an inch-and-a-half-thick checklist that is gone through on an annual basis. It is really the highest-level reporting we have for governments. So again, I just wanted to point out the efforts put in by staff to ensure compliance with that program. Certainly looked highly upon by bond rating agencies and some of the users of your financial statements. So thank you again, Melissa, for your efforts in that report. I do want to point out the audit opinion. You will find that on pages one, two, and three of the CAFR. We did, in fact, as Melissa noted, issue what we call an unmodified opinion. That is the highest level we are able to issue. That means the financial statements as presented are materially correct. We have two goals, really, in the financial statement audit. One is obviously making sure the financials are, in fact, materially correct. The second is assessing the internal control environment. So we come in and do internal control testing to ensure that we can, in fact, rely upon those numbers. I'm happy to report this evening that we had no internal control issues that were identified during our testing. So overall, a very clean audit process. Melissa mentioned two sections within the document that are not in the current draft form, but certainly will be included in the final CAFR document that is submitted. The first being the transmittal letter that is included in the introductory section when you receive it. The transmittal letter goal is to really highlight what I call non-financial data, so really talking about the local economy, major initiatives for the year, and accomplishments. So typically, there aren't always dollar amounts attached to those, so I always think from the council's perspective, I agree with Melissa. It's a very good resource to read. The second document is the management discussion and analysis. Typically, we treat this as the executive summary. So I know it is a large document. There are a lot of numbers and disclosures. What we try to do in that management discussion and analysis is really capture the key transactions for the year. So once that is available in final form, I would encourage council to read that section of the report in detail. At a very high level, I just wanted to also reiterate the results for the general fund. So the general fund, total fund balance as of the end of the fiscal year was about $9.6 million. Melissa's schedules there reference a $7.7 million fund balance in the general fund as being available for spending. The difference between the two numbers represents items that are already set aside for future spending going into the next year. So we do have some items that are already committed or assigned, and that's where we get our difference between that $9.6 million and the $7.7. That $7.7, as Melissa pointed out, does represent, in fact, 25% of operating expenditures, or roughly three months. I would say that's fairly right on par with industry standard for a municipality of your size, so certainly within the range of the fund balance policy, and certainly within the range of, if we looked at kind of what your neighbors are doing, they would probably be within that same kind of three-month reserve policy. She also mentioned that the refuse fund and the 911 funds' ending results also were within compliance of their policies. So obviously, we will continue to monitor those on an annual basis going forward to ensure they are compliant with those policies that have been set by council. Page 79 of the CAFR will begin the pension disclosures, and I just wanted to highlight a couple of key items within the pensions. The police pension fund actually reported an increase in overall net position of about $5.7 million. Fire had an increase of $5.2 million. We saw some outstanding investment returns this year, and so certainly, we kind of knock on wood and hope the pension funds have another successful year this year. With those investment returns, the percent funded actually jumped 8% in police and 7% in fire. We work with about 65 municipalities, lots of police and fire pension funds. To have an increase of that amount in a single year is actually a very successful result for the fiscal year. So I just wanted to point out those key highlights. And IMRF is actually 95% funded. I believe your document there says 85. That is the prior-year amount, so it actually had about a 10% increase in funding this year. Current state statute requires that all of those pension plans are 90% funded by the year 2040. So IMRF is well over that percent funded requirement already. Okay? I also want to point out the last section of the CAFR, which is what we call our statistical section. There is a lot of 10-year trend information provided within the statistical section. I always think from a council's perspective, it gets lots, gives lots of good historical context to the results for the fiscal year. In particular, the last two pages of that document are going to provide a really nice, concise summary of the debt structure for the city. So if you're looking for one central location to obtain outstanding debt information, the last two pages of that CAFR document will be a good resource for you. With regards to the management letter, that is the document that Melissa passed out to you this evening. Being that we had no internal control issues, no issues at all during our testing, we actually have no new management letter recommendations. So that document is provided as an update to prior recommendations, so we're giving you a status update. So I just wanted to briefly touch base on those recommendations from prior years and where we stand. Item number one within the document relates to funds over budget. We did have two funds that were slightly over budget for the year, TIF number two and liability insurance, really just some timing issues as we close the year as far as expenditure recognition there. Okay? The second comment relates to negative fund balance, and we're going to see a trend here. All that's left on that list is TIF 2. That is typically the nature of those TIFs. We don't make money in the front years, and, you know, we hope as development happens that those incremental taxes then come in to cover those initial deficits. So TIF 2 is still in that deficit position. Comment number three is deficit cash. We're going to repeat TIF number two. Being that we have deficit fund balance, we typically also have deficit cash position. So that is, in fact, the only fund left on that list, and we'll continue to provide updates going forward. The last recommendation that was previously provided relates to a governmental accounting standards board change, or a GASB change. It is in reference to GASB Statement Number 75. It is applicable to the city next fiscal year, so we will be addressing this comment with Melissa through this next-year audit cycle. What it relates to is really the idea of retiree healthcare costs, and what is the potential future liability related to the idea that we have retirees on our healthcare plan. Obviously, retirees, in theory, bring up the cost of overall health insurance, and so we utilize the services of an actuary to help us measure that incremental liability. So we will be working with Melissa, as well as an actuarial firm, to help establish what that liability is under the new reporting standards. It is one of those, I kind of feel like the "don't kill the messenger" kind of concept because it is a rather complicated statement that I think is difficult for most people to grasp the concept of it. In the state of Illinois, health insurance is typically a pay-as-you-go kind of concept. So we know we have retirees on the health insurance plan. Each time you go through renewal, the more retirees you have, the higher the renewal premiums are going to be. So in theory, those costs are quasi-absorbed through the annual budget process, through paying that health insurance cost. But GASB has, in fact, come along and said they would like to measure that potential future long-term liability. So we want to continue to issue clean opinions, so unfortunately, we have to adhere to GASB's requests as far as disclosure and calculations. I would be happy to answer any specific questions, and I know Melissa would be as well. Anything else you would like touched on as part of the discussion this evening?
Well, first off, I just want to say a big thank you to Jamie Wilkie, Ron Eamon, and all their team at Lauderbach and Eamon. It's a very thorough process, and we're very pleased that you're our auditors. We're happy to answer any questions. Again, we will be loading the audit by June 29th, Friday, June 29th, as we also file with outside agencies. One of the things that we will also be looking at going forward, of course, we're looking at the bond issuance, and that'll be brought back in a later, future city council meeting, actually, committee of the whole meeting in July. But we're happy to answer any questions tonight as well. So thank you very much as far as the audit.
Well, I do wish to thank you for coming forward, and as I kidded with you before the meeting, I'm very thankful. It's less than two hours.
There you go.
I do appreciate that. Anyone on the council, any comments or questions? Saying none, thank you.
We appreciate it. Have a wonderful evening.
Okay. Mr. Don Wenzel, I am told that you are up. You are in charge tonight.
I'll just give a brief introduction.
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Moore.
Just a brief introduction. Superintendent Wenzel's been working on this project for quite some time. It's a partnering opportunity he's been pursuing with some area businesses off Squibb Drive regarding sharing costs of a city entry sign located along Gulf Road. Again, he has all the information you'll need. One item I would like to point out is that we met with our consultant for the comprehensive plan recently, and when they found out that we were already involved in pursuing this, they were quite pleased with the fact that we were putting energy into those avenues. So I will step aside.
And thank you, Mr. Moore.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This evening, I bring in an idea forward to you and requesting your input into the concept of combining one of our entry signs with the ability to allow a couple of our businesses that do not have Gulf Road frontage to partner with us to, you know, get their business logos on the sign. The location, the proposed location for this sign would be at Gulf Road and Ring Road. We've had discussion with the Atrium Corporate Center, and this would go on the northeast corner of the drive that goes in there. It would be a lighted sign, larger than what is, that we have down at John Woods East, down here on Kirchhoff Road. It would be wider and taller and would accommodate four panels for the businesses. J.C. Restoration has made a commitment for two panels. School Health has asked for one panel for school health and one for a potential tenant that they would have in the building that's currently under construction. In the write-up that you have in front of you is some proposed cost for the businesses. Basically, what it, the businesses would offset the additional costs that the city would incur to put up this sign and would pay an annual maintenance fee to the city for not only the sign, but the landscaping around it and the electrical energy to light the sign. There has been some contract language that was passed on to the city attorney for review and comment, so we're still in the stages of developing that agreement with the businesses. But when I gave them some, what I thought and what I've outlined here in the write-up, you know, the costs, they were agreeable to it. The city does not allow for off-premise signs, and for at least 10 years that I know of, J.C. Restoration has been trying to get a sign at, on Gulf Road so that people know where his business is because they do a lot of events over there. And so we came up with this concept, and hopefully, city council, you know, agrees with the concept, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wenzel. Any comments from the council or questions? Mr. Banjo.
Thank you. I'm in full support of this. I think it's a great idea. Thanks to Mr. Wenzel and Public Works for bringing this in front of us. Perfect location for that sign also. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. De Estes.
Mr. Wenzel, the cost, can you share with us the cost of what I'll call a standard sign without the extras? Approximately, I don't even know.
If you give me just a moment to flip through the document here. Okay, the illuminated sign that we put up last year, we put up two of them, and the signs were basically $15,000.
Okay.
And so this particular one would be $29,000 with the businesses sharing or paying the cost, basically, the $15,000 difference in cost.
And that is exactly what I wanted to know. So it cost us 15 to put one up, and the four businesses will pay approximately 15 more to get the bigger, better, nicer, and their name on it.
Right.
And is this solar or is this electric?
This one will be lighted with regular electric. The second sign that is in the proposal would be, we have two in the budget this year for replacement. This would be one of them with the additional cost being paid for by the businesses. The second sign is the sign that is over on Hicks Road by Northrop. And so because we don't have the ability to power it from streetlights or anything in the area, that would, is proposed to be solar, and the additional cost for the solar is $6,400.
Okay. Well, we have been talking about solar signs for, I don't remember how many years now.
Yeah. Well, if we want the signs lighted, we don't have a lot of options.
Right. I mean, we talked about solar signs over by...
We've got Hicks and Euclid, Plum Grove by, I'm sorry, Euclid by Plum Grove. And then, the ones we put in are, the other ones can all be lit by tying into the streetlights. So, we're looking at three locations unless we, you know, move a sign or put one somewhere, add a sign.
I'm all in favor of this. I think this is something really good for the businesses and I think Alderman Cannon and I were on this committee with you and a few other people and we talked about this for months and months and months.
Yes.
And divided, and voted and came up with some stuff. So, I'm glad to see that this is all starting to come to fruition. Keep up the great work. Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from Mr. Wenzel?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Mr. Bunnets.
The cost to be determined, bringing the power, et cetera, are we anticipating that they wouldn't be, like, exceed 50% of the budget here for this sign?
The cost to bring the power to the sign is going to be minimal because we've got an electric, or we have a control cabinet for our street lighting within 50 feet of the sign. So, we have the ability to tie into that. On a secondary note, there currently is an AT&amp;T sign that has been there since AT&amp;T occupied that property, I don't know how many years ago. That goes before pre-comm and so on and they can't even find documents giving them the right to have the sign there because it's on the Atrium property. I reached out to AT&amp;T when I started this project and asked them if they wanted to be a partner on this sign. And after six months of going back and forth with their property people and so on, they said, "No, we don't need a sign there and you have our permission to remove it." So, the current AT&amp;T sign that is there will come out, ours will go in and we, you know, will be able to, like I said, for minimal cost, be able to tie into our streetlight cabinet that's there.
Okay.
And that'll be by, done by staff.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Wenzel.
Thank you.
Mr. Horn, you're going to tell us about FOG?
No, I am not. I'm going to tell you about the guy who's going to tell you about FOG.
Okay.
Ryan Rivard is a water operator for the city. He's been responsible for rebuilding and managing our cross-connection control program citywide. He has now taken on the FOG program, which as you can see, stands for fats, oils, and grease. This is a program that is likely going to be mandated in the very near future by both federal and state EPA. It would, as well as MWRD. It is a program that we have taken the initiative to start gathering data on area businesses. Specific businesses within the city generate more fats, oils, and greases than others. And if they don't maintain the system designed to keep that out of the sewer, it gets in the sewer, which increases our maintenance cost, increases emergency response cost, increases the chance of sewer overflows, and also increases the cost on MWRD's process, which then is passed on to the users, our businesses and residents. So, Ryan's going to provide a brief presentation and PowerPoint. I will be available after for questions as well, but I have to man the PowerPoint. So, thanks.
Thank you. Ryan, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
You are here, man.
I am here. Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for having me. I am here to talk about the all elusive fats, oils, and greases that everyone's so excited about and has seen the PowerPoint. So, I'm just going to dive right in. Fats, oils, and greases, we in the industry call it FOG. And we also have Rob over here who's going to be helping me out because our clicker's not working so well. So, what is FOG? It occurs from anything, cooking with anything with fats, oils, and greases that gets down the sink and into our sanitary system. Reasons for FOG, like I just kind of went through, enters a sanitary sewer through cooking. It's more prevalent with restaurants, hotels, special needs facilities, as they cook for more people and thus more FOG enters the sanitary system. This is kind of a basic overview of what a grease interceptor is. After a kitchen sink, dishwasher, anything that can get down into the sanitary lateral of a business hotel, this could even, this is kind of all over the board for the industrial area. So, you have an inflow that comes in that basically drops all the water that comes through and from the sanitary. The grease rises to the top as where more solids go down to the bottom. When some of the grease hardens, it comes down to the bottom as well. There's a baffle wall that separates and then the outflow usually takes the clearer water out into the sanitary veins. So, in kind of a layman's terms, I tried to put half the image to the left from the sinks to the sewers. So, underneath the sink, there would be a grease interceptor and/or it could be located outside of the commercial area. And that goes into the main sewer line and then right there at the end of it is a FOG, a FOG clog. And these are different things that could happen with a fats, oils, and grease clog. Not the most pleasing to the eye to see, but these are definitely issues that happen nationwide. The bottom part is a large, this would be more like MWRD lines, that if they had a clog, this is the fats, oils, and greases that go through the sanitary that, you know, accumulate over time and area and they can make pretty large clog. Other ones we have up top, up top right, I'll make mention of, that's more of something that would be our sanitary main. With all those fats, oils, and things, it's basically like an artery. It clogs over time when you have so many fats, oils, and greases and they can clog up and as future slides will show, the different things that can happen. So, Rob, if you hit the next one. When not properly maintained, below are examples. You can kind of see the overflow out from sewer manholes out in, that could, you know, be mixed with surface water. They can back up residents, they can back up commercial areas, restaurants, things like that. Basically, you're cutting off the main flow, the sanitary, through a clog of fats, oils, and greases and then that, the only way to go out is through drains or come up through a manhole or, you know, unfortunately, residents' houses. So, if there's this floor drain and you have, you know, a basin or something like that and you don't have overhead plumbing, these are things that could definitely come out of. I have a few slides here, just pictures depicting what can happen when, you know, fats, oils, and greases do clog up a sanitary line that residents are a part of. It's a nasty thing, horrible cleanup, but these are, this is the reason why we're looking to create a new and improved FOG plan. City utilities and Public Works in Response, this is our hazard mitigation. We have trouble spots within, you know, City of Raleigh Meadows that we go out and we actually jet the lines every week because they've become so bad. We have a jetter and a vector truck that we do jet and then we also have a televising truck to take a look at all the sanitary mains to make sure that we're clear and good. There's a before and after picture, before what it can look like, when it's been for a while and there's been a lot of fats, oils, and greases that have clogged up the pipe and then after we jet, televise, this is what things would look like afterwards. City of Raleigh Meadows FOG program, we try to mitigate the FOG issues by fighting with the nontoxic biological enzyme, which we call biodrops. We have certain areas around the city which we do this already and it helps break up and mitigate some of the grease as well as our jetting of the trouble spots. The reason for this whole FOG program, why I bring this to you, is we need to hold the restaurants, hotels, special need facilities, a little bit more accountable for these blockages and to make sure that these grease interceptors are being cleaned when they should be and that they're not backing up or sending out all these harmful things into our sanitary system. Financial issues, this is the bottom line, ladies and gentlemen. We're basically with the city resources, with manpower, vehicles, materials, fuel, enzymes, water, time, even replacing pipe for emergency response, these all cost the city money. And then the Metropolitan Waste Water Reclamation District, sorry to go, MWRD, whenever they have issues on their end, basically, they have clogs from all the cities that are, their fogs going into their main lines. When they have issues, they have to do the same exact thing, but on a larger scale and that cost gets put back on to the residents, the taxpayers, the restaurants, everyone around here. Through the last 10 years, the United States Congress has heard quite a few of these cases that are larger in scale and they have growing numbers with dealing with contamination. And as a result, they're making more stricter regulations to the states and then obviously, trickle-down effect comes down to municipalities, things like that. But we're basically, they want the EPA to set a standard, which they have, to enact FOG programs for each, you know, one of the municipalities. And so, the IEPA regulates through us. So, we're supposed to have a FOG program, which we do to a point, but we want to strengthen ours because of all the issues that we've been having. And then EPA and MWRD, as a direct result, Illinois Environmental Protection Agency and Metropolitan Water Reclamation District have begun to tighten their belt on FOG-related issues like I just said. By taking these actions, we're reducing the risk of FOG buildup and overflow, reduce the need for emergency response by the city. It will cut down the amount of money and the city and NWRD pays to fix FOG-related issues and it will satisfy EPA and IEPA regulations and requirements. And that is my slides for you, ladies and gentlemen. Is there any questions?
That was fun-filled, action-packed.
I know.
I know a moment. I just wanted to tell you that. That's great. Do we have any comments from the council? Mr. Banjo?
Thank you.
This is probably something they do in Iowa, right?
Well, sure. I'm stunned I didn't hear the word Fatburg. I thought that was always associated with...
There's quite a few names. I decided, you know, leave it clean for the children out there.
You're probably going to be telling us when you roll out a program, but let's say, I don't know any other plates to dump the grease after I fry the bacon on a Saturday morning and it doesn't go in the compost. So, what's step one of that?
So, the best way, because FOG happens on all scale, residents to businesses, it just happens larger in businesses and that's why they have grease traps and things like that. But for residents, for any fats, oils, and grease, let's just say you made a big thing of bacon, Sunday morning, it's a great morning out, done with the bacon, you had breakfast and now you have, you know, that grease leftover. Best thing to do is to let that sit out for a time and then it'll harden and you can throw that away, wipe it away right in the trash. Same thing with any other grease that you have from your foods. That is the best way to get rid of it, is actually dispose of it through the trash and not through the sink. Informative.
I have one other question with, it sounds like you guys have isolated, if you're jetting weekly, you probably know where the hotspots are for businesses that are dumping this stuff. Is there some sort of, is there some sort of monitoring device you could put on the sewer, buy the drops from those specific places? And then, if the water quality turns into 50/50 of FOG, they'll get sent a letter saying you're dumping too much in the system?
There are things I'd have to get back to you with the different monitoring devices, but what we're looking to go forth with in the future, which we'll bring back to, is to have a system in place with, it's called BSI. I use them for cross-connects control. They basically are the third-party representative for us that they send out the letters when the cross-control needs to be, you know, taken a look at after and then we get, you know, kind of the bounce back of these people are not in compliance, these people have failed, and then we go after them. So, they're kind of our monitoring. These are the people of which we're looking to also use as our kind of third-party contractor to send out the notice, you know, this is how big your grease interceptor is, this is how many people, you know, you expect per day, this is how much grease that, you know, we typically see within this. This is when you need to have it cleaned out. So, they would be monitoring, all right, so every month, let's just say, you know, there's X amount that people, X amount of grease, they need to get cleaned out every month. They're going to send the receipts and everything into BSI to let them know that they have met everything and all the requirements for that month and therefore, we wouldn't be... What's the word I'm looking for?
Yeah, just, if I could briefly explain, the programs set up, a copy of the letter was attached to your packet. We're right now just collecting data. What we're wanting to know is what the building, what kind of grease they produce and what size, the capacity of the grease interceptor they have. Based on that information, we can determine how regular they should be cleaning that. That's primarily the biggest thing is somebody has a, you know, say a 300-gallon tank, which maybe is required to be cleaned every two months and they clean it every eight. That's the issue. And so, what this program will do is once we have that information, we give it to the person who is kind of managing the database, they will set out letters. If they didn't receive the inspection report from them, they will get a letter from this company saying, "You need to send this in." The cost, we're just starting discussions with them now, the cost is very minimal, maybe $1,000 or $2,000, maybe $2,000 or $3,000 annually to manage this program. Once we get it up and on and running, we should be able to handle it either internally or we can start passing the costs along to the business. Those are issues that City Council have to decide when we get there. We just wanted to let City Council understand the program we're doing because we have started sending out the letters and you may be getting phone calls. We wanted you to know what it was all about.
Thank you.
Mr. De Estes.
Thank you. So, I understand all. My question is, is this a federally mandated law at this time or are we going ahead?
We're ahead of the curve on the mandate, but the regulations are coming down very strict very soon. I don't have the exact details. We're a little ahead of the curve, but again, we made the decision to start moving forward on it because the maintenance costs far exceed the expenses.
Oh, I understand that, but I'm looking at it from a business perspective and I'm saying, "Okay, I have a restaurant and the company that I deal with cleans my grease trap once a month because they say that's what I need." So, now, what I'm hearing is some person or entity that I don't know, that I don't deal with, is going to come in and tell me I should clean my grease trap every two weeks because of something that they figured somewhere, some standard, and it has nothing to do with me. And there's no law federally or locally to back it up. So, it's going to cost me twice as much money, potentially, and there's no law that says I have to do any of this. So, I understand what you're doing and why we're doing it and I don't disagree. But if we don't have federal law to say this is a law that has to be done, how much compliance do you think that we are going to get from businesses when they know it's going to cost them more money to come and clean the grease traps that somebody says has to be done twice as often or three times as often as they should? Now, granted, there are some companies that should do it every two months and you said every eight months and, yeah, that probably exists. Okay? And shame on them, they should be cleaning it more often, but they're also getting fruit flies and backups themselves because they're not taking care of it.
Yeah, I would agree with that. The unfortunate reality though is most of the backups that occur usually back up very far from where the point, because it doesn't solidify till much further down. So, I thought about this on the way here today, to use this area as an example. The businesses down near like the Dunkin' Donuts, Baskin Robbins, that would back up first from McDonald's grease. If McDonald's didn't pump out and it flowed towards Route 53, Dunkin' Donuts might be doing exactly what they're supposed to do, but they would back up first. That's the first point. The second point is, we're not looking to make this difficult and be more regulatory than what is responsible to do the cleaning. We're not going to tell them they need to clean it more, they just need to clean it as required. There are some tanks that are larger that, and have a lower use, that might only need to get cleaned once a year. We don't know that. It's really just a matter of someone wrapping their head around this program and trying to manage it. I will tell you, we have received phenomenal response to date. I think most of the businesses are really interested and we didn't tell anyone, they had to send us back. We simply asked them if they would and if they'd be interested. I feel like we have like 75% already prior to the second letter going out. So, I feel like we have good response from the businesses.
Okay, but you said, "Clean as required." Required by whom? And who says that they're experts?
So, before it was kind of the Wild West. They kind of weren't able to judge themselves. Right now, with the IEPA coming down and to have an active FOG program for each municipality, there's quite a few within the area that have made... there's quite a few within the area that have made stricter rules locally. Libertyville being one of them, they made amendments for different fines that can be enacted. We're a little bit in a kind of a trick bag situation since Public Works and Community Development are one, and we have a part-time plumbing inspector who's kind of, would be running something more like this. We're kind of running it, you know, with both departments and with limited resources. These are the things of, like, a program like this is what we're looking to accomplish.
I'm, I'm, again, I'm all in favor of, of a program, but as a business, I want to know who is making a decision on how I should run my business.
We're going to be bringing an ordinance to the city council in the future. As part of that, we can certainly explain to you, these aren't going to be arbitrary things, and they're not going to be dictated by the, the business by any means. It will either be through the Illinois State Plumbing Code, through the food, the food code, the, the one, the Health Inspector Code, things like that. It will be rooted in some sort of standard that can be pointed to, not just be an arbitrary rule. Absolutely not.
Okay, well, I'm not saying it's arbitrary, I'm just saying there needs to be some kind of, if it works and, and if it's good for Rolling Meadows, it needs to be a standard in the area. Or else then we're going to be less competitive to get more restaurants, especially restaurants in, because they're the ones where this mostly counts.
Yeah, I, I can assure you, we're not looking to be over-regulatory as compared to any other community.
Okay.
For sure.
Thank you.
First off, I want to thank you for being proactive on this, because it sounds like you're coming up with a program where you're going to be educating the businesses. Ryan, okay, I saw that little, okay, it's Ryan. And you're communicating with the businesses, so we're not blind signing anybody, we're letting them know it's coming forward. So I, anytime we can be signaled forward and let businesses know where we're going, I think that's, that's very positive, and as long as we keep the communication and the lines open, we're good. Any other comments? Mr. Bud Matts?
So when you mentioned that you have trouble spots that are occurring on a weekly basis, so do we have an idea of if these trouble spots are showing up on a weekly basis, what's causing them, and which businesses there are? Do we have a way of encouraging these businesses to change their practices presently?
Presently, it's a little bit more difficult. This program would definitely make it a little bit easier. These trouble spots, from being a guy who's been in the hole to see all these things, to, you know, being here in front of you explaining them all, there's quite a few businesses that definitely are a little bit more laxed with their FOG, you know, and their grease interceptor, interceptor cleaning. This is one of the things we want to move forward to make sure that everyone's in compliance, that is, is doing the right thing and, you know, doing well by the city as well.
So is there a mechanism in place for those who are, I'll just say, are polluting, are...
We've, not, not currently. It's kind of a friendly knock on the door and popping at the grease interceptor to take a look at it. Hey, you know, you're way overdue, look at this, this is how bad it is. These are things of which we're, why we were starting this program and trying to get a little bit more teeth behind what we're doing.
That, that will be part of the ordinance, Alderman Bud Matts, that we will explain a little further what the, I don't want to call it, the violation would be, what the repercussions would be for the business if they did not comply with these rules.
At this point, do we have any estimate on what the costs are that we're incurring on this weekly basis by doing this?
We have to run the numbers again.
Yeah, we, we talked about trying to get those to you for this meeting, we just didn't have time, but the costs are pretty significant when you look at two men on the flusher, flushing it weekly, plus we purchase a biochemical that actually, we dump in specific hotspot sewers to break apart that grease. It kind of smells like that orange glow, kind of citrusy, and it actually breaks apart the grease in the system. So both of those things, we're hoping to reduce as a result of this program, which, you know, if I run the numbers on it based on some data, once the, the utility superintendent gets back in town, certainly can provide those. I know they'll be pretty significant numbers.
Okay.
Mr. Bud Matts, anything else? So you can provide that to us in a staff letter, basically?
Yeah, either, depending on, depending on when we bring the ordinance, if that comes in the near future, I'd like to tie it to that if we can.
And then also recycling, is there any type of program with, are we encouraging or with the FOG program, do they try to encourage these restaurants or areas to recycle? Or is it just, we're just, they, whoever, whatever company they use, that company comes forward and takes it, and they, they decide what they're going to do with the program?
Yeah, they're required to dispose of it in a certified area, a certified facility. It's required to be disposed of properly, environmentally.
Okay, thank you. Mr. DeEstes?
Thank you. Have you talked to anybody at, like, the Northwest Municipal Conference to see what other communities are doing, and whether or not the Northwest Municipal Conference as a whole would want to do something like this?
Actually, I was, the, the venue that I was considering bringing up was the Municipal Partnering Initiative, which is very similar to that. It's just a smaller group of municipalities, more closely located geographically. I certainly would bring it, bring it up because it, it makes a lot of sense if we can all have consistent regulations and, and as opposed to all these up and down. So certainly we'll bring that up.
Yeah, I think that would be a, a good way to approach it. I mean, I like the approach that we're taking, that we're being the leaders, but I think in order for us to maintain a competitive advantage and not be, have a competitive disadvantage, if everybody does it, then it's fair for everybody. If we're having a problem with it, the other municipalities are also having a problem with it.
Certainly.
So I'm, yeah, I'd say, you know, full steam ahead, and just let's make sure that we don't put ourselves in a competitive disadvantage to anybody around us.
We'll, we'll make sure we provide you guys some data with other communities doing it, other communities interested. My, my impression is there's probably a lot of communities right where we're at right now, trying to develop the program.
Thank you. Any further questions?
To tag along with that, I know there's quite a few municipalities out here that are really looking for something, and smaller municipalities like ourselves, but we're taking a proactive approach, but there's a lot of larger municipalities in the area that are doing things like this. And we're trying to be very transparent in coming to you, you know, early on, this is the program we're looking to start, you know, just sending out brief letters that we're trying to be as transparent as possible as we go forward.
Thank you, Ryan and Rob. Any other comments? I guess then what we're going to ask for is a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? All in favor?
Tied.
Opposed. We are going...